While we set up, I have a few announcements. First, welcome and thank you for coming today. That was a lucky you in. Also, look how it's keeping. First, we have a green truck with license plate JJB 0761 has the lights on in the Capitol parking lot. It's a green truck, license plate JJB 0761 has the lights on. I first want to remind you that the emergency exits are on the sides. They are open to be accessed when we exit the program. They are asking, please use the exit at that. We are hoping that this program educates you, answers some questions that you may have with the experts on hand. And I would also like to say the moment I presented public officials, Jeremy Schumaker, who is attending on behalf of Senator Alway, Representative Kaufman, Tom Minn, who is the Governor's Office of Homeland Security Director, Bob Thomas, County Commissioner, Dane Anthony, County Sheriff, Shelley Layton with the FBI, and TJ with the FBI. I would also like to thank the Capitol Theater for providing a venue for this evening and the Capitol Theatre League for their work with the skits right now. Finally, thank you to Jeff Connor, the Franklin County Coroner, who is a major player in setting this up. So, thank you very much. So, without further ado, I would like to introduce Secretary Tennis.
Good evening. Thank you Maggie, and thank you to all of you who came out tonight to recognize the critical importance of this problem. Drug and alcohol abuse and addiction is an invisible giant that's ravaging our communities. It affects one out of four families in Pennsylvania and across our nation. It drives seventy percent of the common problems that we have in our communities. Seventy percent of individuals that are locked up in our prisons and jails are there with untreated addiction. It's a national problem, it's a Pennsylvania problem, and it's becoming worse. We know right now that there's a heroin overdose problem. It's a very serious issue. We know that it began with a change in prescribing practices that occurred maybe fifteen or twenty years ago when doctors, the medical professionals decided that they could eliminate all pain, that they were going to increase prescribing and opioid prescribing quadrupled over the next few years. In the last ten years, the number of prescription run overdoses, overdose deaths have quadrupled. Heroin overdoses are also increasing, and we know that eighty-two percent of those on heroin started with prescription drugs. This is a very, very serious issue. It's a treatable issue. It's a preventable issue. And the first thing, I think I do think of this as an invisible giant and an invisible killer in our communities. Imagine with these deaths, you've heard a number of people dying. Imagine if a sniper were to come into our communities, come into one of our towns and kill that number of people. Imagine the kind of press and the attention it would get and the resources that would go to take care of this problem. But because of stigma and denial and shame that exists around this disease, we don't, we just don't take care of it. We don't face, and what I want to applaud each and every one of you tonight for is coming here to really shed the light on this problem and to say, we're not going to turn our back on this anymore, not in our families, not in our communities, not in our state, not in our nation. So, I do appreciate your, your ability to see that and your commitment to this issue. Governor Corbett is addressing this and our administration is addressing this in a number of ways. You've probably heard of prescription drug take-back boxes. We've had two hundred distributed around the state. We're normal, we're going to continue to do it until we have them available to all of our communities. We know that our kids are accessing these prescription drugs because they've been left in medicine cabinets and when they're not used. It is critical. There was a time when it might have made sense in some way, I need those prescription drugs in case you needed them for another day. Not anymore. If you leave prescription opioids, then it's OxyContin, Vicodin, the painkillers, the tranquilizers, any of those abusive drugs, you leave them in a medicine cabinet for another day, you are putting our kids at risk. It is no longer responsible, and I urge each and every one of you to check your medicine cabinets, make sure that if you have unused drugs in there, that you get them into a dropbox as quickly as possible. In addition, we are, we've started a prescribing practices work group. There are some of us here today. We met for three hours this morning to settle on a model. We developed a Pennsylvania model, taking the best practices that have occurred around the nation as guidelines for doctors to have safer, more effective prescribing. There's not, there are better answers than just giving out more and more painkillers. There are other ways to deal with pain. There are ways or methods that doctors can use to reduce the level of prescription opioid prescribing. That's going to help our communities as well. We also have an overdose rapid response task force. It's broken into five segments. We have all our county drug and alcohol directors such as Rick Wynn here are working at our, at our, at the Center for Program Directive with our emergency rooms, so that when people survive overdoses, we get them, we make sure that we get them into, do the best we can to get them into treatment. We're working across from our criminal justice system to make sure that we do a more effective intervention for drug and alcohol treatment. There are a number of other areas we're working to basically get law enforcement, the healthcare providers, the emergency care providers, all speaking to each other on a real-time basis so that some drug like fentanyl, synthetic marijuana, the bath salts, any of these dangerous drugs crop up in our communities, that all of those different disciplines know about it right away at once so that law enforcement can go and make undercover bodies, get them out of our, off our streets so that emergency care providers know how to deal with the overdoses in an effective, safe and effective way until our community is ready to receive those people. There is so much to do. It was two hundred and forty years ago that one of the signs of the Declaration of Independence identified drug and alcohol, alcoholism as a disease. We've been trying to punish our way out of the problem for hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of years, and as you saw in these very powerful presentations tonight, you cannot arrest your way out of the problem. You happen to have in this county, Franklin County, in my, in my view, the most enlightened district attorney, one of, maybe the most enlightened district attorney I've met, who's really taking an aggressive approach on this. He'll tell you a little bit more about what he's doing here. We're very, we're very, very happy to be working hand-in-hand with him to develop those programs. Those are just a few of many initiatives that we're working on to address this problem. It's not acceptable to have our, our children die. It's not acceptable to have our citizens die of this problem anymore. We need to insist with our policymakers, our founders, we need to insist that we put the adequate resources on this, that we think more clearly, that we stop rushing it under the rug, and that we get people the help that they need. So, let's all work together and we will do that, I promise you. Thank you.
Our next presenter, Conchady Darcus, Chief Arnold of the Chambersburg Police Department. I also hope the correction. The Theatre League is the Chambersburg Community Theatre, and they are going to be putting on Peter Pan with a live theater that will be playing in theatre for the first time. So, that's why I'm sorry, and I got everything right. Am I good?
Okay, thank you.
Good evening. Feel like we're in a lineup. I want to thank you for coming tonight to learn about drug overdose and how, as a community, we can continue to educate people on this subject and hopefully save lives by changing negative behaviors. I'll be discussing briefly gateway drugs. And the three I'm going to talk about is marijuana, THC. More use of the drug with its higher level of THC has resulted in admissions to emergency rooms and an increase in drug counselors who see patients who are now addicted to marijuana. In the states that have legalized it, there's been an increase in children admitted in emergency rooms with accidental ingestion of marijuana. There's also been increases in robberies of people who've had monies associated with this new business. Fortunately or unfortunately at this point, because the proceeds of marijuana aren't permitted, they, they can't be put in the banks, so the people that deal with the business, even in the states that's legalized, they now become robbery targets. Synthetic marijuana today has been formulated to stay one step ahead of the laws that regulate marijuana. The manufacturer's changed the chemistry just enough that it's legal but has the same effects. Slowly, our laws are trying to catch up to this issue. By purchasing marijuana from a dealer on the street, you've now exposed yourself to someone who probably can get you other harder drugs or sells those drugs themselves. Of course, this does not mean that everyone that smokes marijuana would use other drugs, but it increases the chances of other drug usage. Longtime substance abuse expert Mike Gilmore said he agrees that marijuana use does not lead to chemical dependence for that or other drugs, but can open a social gateway which in turn leads to more illicit drug use. Yes, there is no proof that anyone that uses marijuana moves on to other drugs because they build tolerance to it like alcohol or cigarettes, in which they need more of the body to get, get something stronger to get the fix. But eighty percent of addiction is due to environment. So, especially for children, if they are exposed to an environment where people are drinking or smoking pot, they are much more likely to enter a world where they can find drugs like heroin or cocaine. So, I consider marijuana a social gateway drug. Approximately sixty-seven percent of Americans say they do drink and alcoholic beverages on occasion. This makes it a drug with the most exposure in the U.S., with it being sold in liquor stores, packer stores, distributors, bars, restaurants. What can parents do to help their teens have the right attitude about the usage of alcohol? It's actually fairly simple. Of course, teens see what parents do, and that makes all the difference. And even if parents are saying, "Don't drink, don't do drugs," but the teens see the parents drinking too much, well then, what are the teens going to do? They're going to think that getting drunk is okay. Twelve percent of young adults who have abused prescription opiates had a prior drug usage according to clinical data from the National Survey on Drug Use and Health. The prevalence of previous substance use was fifty, fifty-seven percent for alcohol, fifty-six percent for cigarettes, and thirty-four percent for marijuana. This shows that all of these drugs can be gateway drugs. Parents must be vigilant if they do find their teens using drugs. They must take action, try counseling, punishment, closer monitoring of the teen activities, and the friends until the usage is stopped. If there are no consequences, the teen will have little or no reason to change their behavior. Teens that use alcohol and other drugs have a higher chance of engaging in sexual activity or other risky behaviors. Tobacco is the last. It has seen a declining popularity of usage since the Surgeon General for the United States has confirmed that tobacco products cause cancer. In nineteen sixty-five, forty-two percent of the U.S. population reportedly used tobacco products. In twenty-twelve, it's now down to eighteen percent. Obviously, there's been a great amount of progress made with cigarettes. There's still those that look to be done. Here in our own state of Pennsylvania, it's illegal to buy tobacco products if you're under eighteen, but it's not illegal to possess them. Forty-three other states currently have laws that prohibit the possession of tobacco products by minors. This loophole needs to be closed. Also, all tobacco products are taxed in Pennsylvania except for smokeless tobacco products. This makes those products cheap and more attractive for teens. Recently, e-cigarette usage within the sixth through twelfth rate category doubled in 2012. This new method of using nicotine is not yet regulated by the FDC. The American Cancer Society and National Lung Association both have spoken out against e-cigarettes. They don't believe the claims that they are better for people that use nicotine. The products have not yet tested properly to know if they are safer than regular cigarettes. In closing, alcohol, tobacco products are legal and should be used according to our laws. Marijuana is currently illegal in Pennsylvania. All three substances can develop into a dependency that could possibly lead to more addictive and dangerous drugs. Zero tolerance is the best advice for the usage of any new substances for young people until, until they reach the age when the substance is legal and they can make a better informed choice. That's all I have tonight. We'll hear a lot more from the other speakers, but these three, three drugs, in my opinion, in front of, I've seen in my almost thirty years in law enforcement, are the beginning and sometimes of the bad road. Some people drink and use alcohol and nicotine and they don't go any further, but many times they don't start with what you saw up here on stage. And as you know, it can end in deadly examples that have seen, so thank you.
Next, we have Lieutenant Robert Johnson with Pennsylvania State Police on the impact of crime on the community.
Good evening. Thanks for taking an important step to changing your community. I can assure you that the members of law enforcement in this auditorium have your best of interests in mind, and I can tell you without a doubt that they will go above and beyond to ensure that your community is safe and changes for the positive. I had a lot of time today to think about what I wanted to say this evening, and you're going to see that everything is going to come full circle. You saw the little skit, saw the daughter, she went to jail, she eventually died, and you saw the one with the mom. And the one with the mom really got me, because did you know that it was a mom? You told her the girl said mom? Well, I'm here to talk to you tonight about the impact of crime on the community. I haven't introduced myself yet. My name's Bob Johnson, and I've been a trooper for nearly twenty-three years, and the vast majority of my career has been spent engaged in drug addiction. So, I have quite a background in this. Before I can talk to you about the effects of crime on the community, you've got to understand what your community is. Whether your community is white, it's black, it's male, it's female, it's old, it's young, it's doctors like you saw in the skit, it's mothers, it's athletes, it's members of the chess club. They're rich, they're poor. This drug, heroin, knows no boundary. It doesn't care if you're the rich kid or the poor kid or the doctor. It wants you, and once it gets its claws into you, it doesn't let go. Rarely after taking heroin for the first or second, maybe the third time, are you feeling the effects of the drug. Your need for the heroin then becomes sustenance, so I can be normal while your body just ravages itself. So, it's not like the other drugs where there might be a high or low or whatever. It's a maintenance, it's a sustenance drug. You heard the chief speak about gateway drugs. He's spot on. If I seem like I'm squinting, it's only because the lights are killing me right now, so. The problem with heroin is this: when you use heroin, you're either going to die, you're either going to need to use it the rest of your life because you can't get away from it, and in the rare case, you might escape its grasp. And you hear gentlemen talk about that in the train. So, now that you know who your community is, everyone's sitting out here, and what heroin wants, we can talk about the effects of crime on the community. Again, couldn't find that better if I wanted it to. You saw the mom ask the daughter for money. That's where it starts. Hey, Bob, can you give us money? I need, I need a little help, I need some money. And then they tap off drugs and they move on to math. And then they begin to sell all of their personal belongings. Now, mind you, everything's going to come full circle and see where I'm going. So, they sell the things that are most important to them, whether it be an antique knife from their grandfather or something that's precious to their grandmother. And when those things are gone, they start stealing from their family, and they ravage them. In the skit you saw, a lot of frustration, I think it's fair to say. It escalates. Crime, the crime of stealing things from family members then goes to the neighbors, it goes to the Wal-Mart, it goes to the workplace. It exponentially expands until we're not talking about petty crimes anymore, we're talking about the theft of weapons from homes that are ultimately traded for more narcotics, more heroin. And then those guns get into the hands of other bad people. Everybody went to jail. When you're in jail, you get to meet some funny people. And guess what? When you're hitting your bottom or you're in that bottom, you're getting resources for finding your stuff easier. So, we've elevated burglaries, and we've stolen a gun, and we've traded it for narcotics. And then low and behold, a weapon that was stolen in Franklin County is used in a crime in South Carolina in aggravated assault and criminal homicide. Or worse yet, it's used in our community. See how it keeps snowballing? Rolling downhill, gathering steam the whole time. So, and it just doesn't end with those crimes. The last time that I remember the heroin problem being as big as it is right now was in roughly 2003. Now, I would expect it would have taken twenty years for this to come back, like bell bottoms and everything else, like the biggest cyclical things. Came back in what, about ten years? Maybe eight? That's bad. So, we need to look at how we can change our communities. We've taken a very gross important step tonight to change our community. What you need to do is change the environment in your homes as well. If you suspect a lot, you want to be engaged in something, don't be easy on them. Tough love. Be the parent that roots through the kid's dresser and finds the things they shouldn't find. If your kid starts looking haggard, question them why. I think you're going to see, when you leave here tonight, you will have a very different perspective on this problem. And again, you've taken the right first step beginning, and thank you very much.
Next, we have Richard Wynn with the Franklin, Franklin Drug and Alcohol Program, and he will explain the benefits of drug use and rehabilitation.
Probably apologize to my head, this is bright in my eyes, it's probably blinding me. First, I'd like to thank our coroner, Jeff Connor, for arranging this town hall meeting. The issues of drug and alcohol abuse are complex, and it is critical for us to all work together in its solution, whether with the criminal justice system or those we simply want to get out from under the control that addiction puts on them. We do not like to talk about our family members who have suffered an addiction due to shame. We do not like to talk about our own addictions due to embarrassment. We do not like to pay taxes for treatments because we believe the individual is at fault. And presidents' wives advise us, and addicts, to just say no. If only it were that easy. Treatment can and does work when done at the right time with a lot of support and adherence to the level and amount prescribed. This is also known as prescribed integrity. So, maybe not the first time, the second, the third, and so on. But, the alternative is to give up hope, to fill our jails and justice system halls. Well, I applaud Secretary Tennis and District Attorney Coe for their willingness to look at alternatives, to take a risk, because the easy thing would just be to say, "We can't afford this," to search for funding sources to allow treatment to be done at the level that's prescribed. It should be noted that Franklin County is third from the bottom in per capita funding for drug and alcohol treatments among all the counties in Pennsylvania. Drug and alcohol is also one of the lowest-funded human services programs, yet it touches a very large segment of our citizenry. This must be corrected. All of this was not what I was asked to talk about. It was just my introduction, but I had to say it. But I'll come back to what I was asked to talk about, the signs and treatments. The staff did this because they're the ones who do this day by day, and they wrote the rest of this for me, and I'm very dependent on them to help you develop. The basic signs of drug use. Most people use drugs for the first time when they're teenagers, no surprise. There were just over two twenty-eight new users of illicit drugs in 2012, or about seven thousand eight hundred ninety-eight new users every day, and fifty-two percent laundering a teen. There are a few basic signs of drug use, but this does not mean that all children or adults will present with these signs if they are using them. Signs include neglecting responsibilities, legal troubles, relationship issues, significant changes in behavior, unexplained need for money, and secretive or suspicious behavior. A person may exhibit all these or none of these signs while acting addiction. Someone would say, "Well, why'd you bother telling me about this?" There's a lot of people coming and doing these things and they're still using. Most people believe they can easily identify a drug user out of the crowd. The truth is that the average substance user typically does not stand out in a crowd. Look to your left, look to your right, any of the people in this room could be substance users. There is no distinct characteristic of a substance user or help you identify if your child or someone who knows you. That means you must know your child and you must pay attention. Pay attention to what they do and who they are with. If you feel they're behaving abnormally and maybe related to drugs, get more information. Educate yourself. Approach them, and don't be afraid to ask for help from a local agency. For more information on this and the morning signs, please refer to the prevention table that was set up in the hall and the other table set up on the treatment side. We divide drug and alcohol prevention and treatment, but it's all ongoing. Unless, if it meets criteria to enter detox treatment, any individual need of services must be assessed using a drug and alcohol assessment tool to determine what treatment services would be most appropriate. When you don't have a lot of money, you try to be as good as you can about prescribing what is necessary. There are two types of inpatient treatment: detox and rehab. Detox is meant for individuals who need medical support while coming off of whatever substance they are using. Withdrawal symptoms that require admission to detox typically do not occur more than five days after the last use. The typically non-twenty-eight day stay is referred to also as rehab. This is where individuals will participate in group therapy and individual sessions with the counselor in a residential setting to work towards sobriety. And when we get to prescribed integrity, it should it shouldn't just be 28 days automatic for everyone or 14 days when you can't afford it. There are two types of community-based outpatient treatment: outpatient and outpatient intensive treatment. Usually outpatient sessions occur about one or two times per week, no more than five hours. Intensive outpatient is three to four times per week, no less than five hours, but no more than 10 hours. This sounds like a lot of bureaucracy that we've had a long time to figure out these things and it's going to take a long time to change them. Drug and alcohol treatment is on 100% voluntary basis by the individual. Typical drug and alcohol facilities are not secure facilities and do not lock their doors or require clients to stay if they want to leave. Individuals may leave at any time. You cannot commit an individual's DNA treatment like you might now have. For more general information or information on specific agencies that provide treatment services, please refer to tables in the back. And please listen to Mr. Vogel as he speaks. Thank you.
Next, we have the District Attorney, Lieutenant Conner, Pat Vogel, speaking about his program, the rehabilitation.
Hi, everyone. I was about 10 years old, I think. I came here, I think, about 30 times to watch Rocky III. They charge $1.50 to come for a matinee and never knew in years where I thought I'd get to stand up facing out this way. Reporters ask me many times about crime, specific crimes. They ask me how prevalent specific crimes may be in our community. And just last week, I was asked about child abuse. And my answer is often the same in a fact word. It's that I think the public would be probably surprised to know how prevalent some things are. But that they're not necessarily epidemic. Sometimes I'm asked about drugs and drug trafficking and different types of drugs. And again, I say that the drug trafficking is kind of steady. It's not an epidemic or addressing spice. But that people would nonetheless be surprised at how much there is out there. No one ever asks me about addiction. They ask me about crimes. And if they ask me about addiction, I would have to answer, I would say, "It's a crisis." I'll say that again, "It's a crisis." National, Commonwealth-wide, and your local, it is a crisis. My staff, I think, is in the audience somewhere. I can't see because of the light. They hear me talk about crises and troubling crimes. And I always tell them to respond without panic. I'm not suggesting anyone panics, but it is a crisis and we need to be aware of it. We've had a war on drugs since the 60s, Nixon, I believe. We've had seven presidents since then. And that will be another one that we're not executing that war properly. We had that seventh president, I suppose, that they've been trying to figure out which presidents we've had since then. Why do I say this is a crisis? Secretary Tennis talked about some of the statistics. He mentioned one in four people, one in four people has substance abuse and are banned. It's one in four. 25%. One in four people with addiction will die as a result of that addiction. Get this. One addicted offender may commit two to three crimes per day. Three to four days per week. This calculates 455 offenses a year. You multiply that by the number of offenders and that reaches tens of thousands of families affected by crime. And I'm just talking about crime. That's the world I live in, the crime prosecution. There are many that do not commit crimes. So, the stats bear out that this is a crisis. What are we doing right now for treatment? Rick went and talked about some of it. There are lots of great people with very great potential and open hearts that are committed to this crisis. But, obviously, this remains a crisis and it needs address. Oftentimes, we have outpatient 28-day stays that are essentially driven by money that's available. Oftentimes, as Rick mentioned, someone may need more than that 28-day inpatient. They may need more than outpatient. But given insurance and given funding available, they cannot get the treatment that they need. If you walk into a hospital or a doctor's office and you got a compound fracture, you've got bones that you can't relate, you don't hear that doctor say that you've got a sprain. Ice it up. Put some ice on it. You'll get better. You need more treatment than that and you deserve more treatment than that. So what we have are shorter stays, we have outpatient, and at some point, there is a cost to shift from treatment to corrections. That's at a national level, state level, and county level. In 1955, there were 600,000 treatment beds, and that's maybe 600,000. That same year, 1955, there were 200,000 prison beds. So there were three times treatment beds as treatment beds, treatment beds as prison beds. Now, today, where there were 600,000 treatment beds, there are now 50,000. Today, there are 2 million prison beds. In 1955, there were 200,000. So we shifted that cost from treatment to prisons. And frankly, speaking for myself, it's not working. It's not acceptable. As the DA, I've been a prosecutor for a bigger dozen years. And now I'm the DA. So my office is in the corner. I have a 30,000-foot view. I happen to have my own caseload still. But I don't just concentrate on my caseload. Concentrate the caseload of everyone in the office and trains in this community, sister jurisdictions, and crimes. And I have to have a bigger picture view. And Secretary Tennis, again, was right. He said 70 to 80% of the crimes that are committed, including in Franklin County, are driven by addiction, drug and alcohol abuse. 70 to 80%. So as DA, I see the same people over and over as well. And addiction is a problem. We have some offenses that are just evil in nature. But we have 70 to 80% that are attributed to someone who's under the phrase addiction. I have a reputation, I believe, as being a tough prosecutor. An aggressive prosecutor, and that is true. And thank you, Gary, for referring to me as a writer. That makes surprise to people here. I actually cling to old Peter Pan. I want to be, forget tough or aggressive. Even smarter. I want to be effective. And I think I work for you and I work for this community and you deserve that. And so, when I began this journey to the law of criminal law and criminal prosecution, I did so because I wanted to seek justice for victims and deliver justice to victims. And there's a legal definition to that, victim. It's what you would generally think it is. It's someone who's been harmed physically or someone who's had something taken from them. You generally think of that as a victim. And that's true. And those are the people I want to help in this job. I won't ask anybody to do this, but if I did ask you to raise your hand that if you've been impacted by addiction directly or intermediate ban or you know someone close to, I think perhaps every hand, or at least a bunch of hands could go up. I'm the one, okay? Several that are close, in my opinion, that have brought that into my life. It cuts across all societal lines, as it seems honest to say. We have treatment options within the criminal justice system. And I get frustrated as a DA, as a law enforcement officer, who wants to be effective. And what I see far too much of is that's literally a check-in block. Literally, a block in the sex institute, check-in, hoping that treatment is done. And from a 30,000-foot view over the whole system, seeing that it's not. So, I'm trying to make myself an expert. I'm reading a lot of materials that I write about this thing called addiction. And I'm not anywhere near an expert yet, but I've talked to a lot of smart people who are experts, including Secretary Tennis. And there, what I found was this. The level of care is the most important thing. Get this. Untreating, undertreating can lead to treatment resistance or increase progression of the disease. And that's what we're doing. Because of the funding. If someone needs to go through six months inpatient residential treatment, but they're being assessed as outpatient, meaning outpatient, that could potentially mean a progression of the disease. What happens if you take half a dose of amitabine or half a dose of insulin? Or half the treatment you need? Doesn't work? You get sicker? And at some point, you tend to lose hope that this is ever going to change, right? The number one predictor in successful outcomes, overcoming addiction, is the length of treatment. There are a lot of things happening physiologically, psychologically, in one's brain in dealing with addiction and overcoming addiction. There are lots of pathways. I'm going to dumb this down a little bit because I don't understand it. I'm not an expert, but essentially, lots of pathways in your brain are being utilized during the course of the disease. A lot. And the first thing that has to happen is those pathways have to be finally done. Okay? It's a time-consuming process. Next, new, good positive pathways have to be built. Both things have to happen. And it's a time-consuming process. That's why the likelihood stays the number one predictor of success of treatment. I believe treatment works. I am a proponent of treatment. I'm a proponent and not an outlaw of treatment. So long as it is the right treatment. So long as there is prescriptive integrity or clinical integrity. I met with the Chiefs of Police here in this county. It's been a number of months ago now. And I believe, not only for myself, but for the rest of the Chiefs, it's our duty to exercise leadership in this community. This isn't just a criminal justice issue. I recognize that. But we can play a large role within exercising leadership. I like the word advocacy. And I think united with the Chiefs and everyone in uniform, we can make a difference. There is definitely an opportunity for hope. There are lots of charges that the police deal with. Lots of acts that are where charges could be filed, but they're never filed every day because someone doesn't report it. Maybe it's a family member of an agent that just doesn't want to report it. Even though they almost had enough and knocked away. And they don't want to completely ruin their family member's life by injecting it into criminal justice system. Maybe they have a felony record, having job problems at some point. And so oftentimes, there are crimes in their families that don't even get reported. What we have to do is break this cycle. We are losing within the criminal justice system. We just are. And we have to talk honestly about it or it's just going to be the same old thing. And I tell you, that's unacceptable, that's a big... We believe with the criminal justice system having punishment, potentiality there, there's a real opportunity to leverage that to enable someone to get the help they actually need. So in your programs, it's a speed good world from the front. And so, I'm going to read that parable to you right now. It's something I like a lot. There's an old Cherokee chief teaching his grandson about life. He told the young boy, "A fight's going on inside of you. It's a terrible fight between two wolves. The one wolf is evil. That wolf is full of anger, sorrow, regret, greed, self-pity, and false pride. But there's another wolf inside, and that wolf is good. That wolf is full of joy, peace, and love, humility, kindness, and faith." He said to his grandson, "That this same fight is going on inside of you." It's going on inside of all of us every day. Every personal matter. And his grandson ponders this for him and then asks grandfather, "Which wolf will win this fight?" And the old man smiled and simply said, "The one that you feed." The reason, this initiative, although we're about to talk about it, it's called Speed Good World. It's something that the coroner mentioned. This needs to be positive. In my view, having raised two children, as soon as you tell someone not to do something, that thing, whatever it is, immediately becomes interesting. And that's the most thing anyone wants to do in the world. But once you tell them they cannot do it, that's the thing they have to do. If we can show people that they can do something positive in this community, in their lives, in their families, then maybe they don't have time to address and feed an addiction or the bad wolf. But they may just grow up to feel accepted instead and not want to disappoint someone else either. So I really like the positivity of that Speed Good World. And we're using that as a name for the initiative that you're going to be doing here in a number of months. I'm working with the state and trying to get some funding available for the program, Speed Good World. The specific plan is that at an interaction where the police have investigated an offense, they determine who did it, there's two options that can happen there. There's the standard, what we do now, right? Someone's going to be arrested, they're going to go to jail, prison potentially, or put on probation, depending on the offense. So if there's a standard thing, we're good at it. We do it all the time. We know the playbook. What's going to happen here, and once we work out all the kinks, is that someone is a suspect. Police officer identifies who it is and brings him in. And I haven't seen a picture. I think the public, the only person who hasn't. But I fear that there's a scene where there's two pillars down and someone has to make a choice. So sort of like that. Police officer says, "Hello, I am Rock Paul. We're meeting right now. This is happening today." This could go one of two ways. You can do the standard, go to jail, go to prison. Or you can accept this opportunity for life, with this gift of life. And what this gift is going to be is the long-term residential rehabilitation program. Not every offense is going to qualify. Certainly, my own offenses will not qualify for that. But in doing this, if someone completes the program, that charge then will not be filed. It won't be on the record. And the key to this, the key to getting me at the table to agree to this is that clinical integrity. Funding has to be secured and supported. Once we have that and we're able to support that long-term residential setting, it's actually critical and absolutely necessary. The expected results are as follows. Number one, practically speaking, is costs. Every dollar spent in treatment saves $7. If medical expenses are included, that raises it to $11. Those with untreated addictions, the medical costs are eight to 12 times that of the general public. And often, the uninsured treatment costs would be absorbed by the hospitals. So there'll be cost savings, practical savings to taxpayers. Less days in incarceration, which is not cheap. There'll be savings in the court, sign, judicial costs. They support you rather than on disability. And most savings come from treating the most severely addicted individuals. To me, the most important part of this is probably the restoration of benefits. There's a lot of people hurting out there in our community, a lot of people. And it's because of addiction. And if you've been with a family that's had that injected into it, it's absorbed. It's almost obsessive for those that are around it. And it absorbs everyone, not just the immediate nuclear family, but everyone around them. And maybe friends are around to that. And this is an opportunity to actually get treatment assistance here and restore that broken, a lot of people hurting in this community. Another key is to reduce crime, obviously, and to reduce... Another key is to reduce crime, obviously, and to reduce recidivism. That word means for pre-defendants, if they don't want someone to continue to commit crimes. Someone may have some latent criminogenic tendencies. They may not otherwise commit a criminal offense, but you put a drug addiction alongside it, and then you may have someone commit crimes like they wouldn't otherwise. So naturally, logically, you remove the drug addiction from the person. What we're hoping for is that this person then doesn't have these criminogenic tendencies coming before. There will be a reduction in addiction. And, you know, I consider myself a lot as patriotic fellow, as you're going to come across, and love this country. And I look around and I see countries like India and China doing this, and this, and this. And they look at us, and want to keep doing this, and this, and this, getting better, better, better economically and otherwise. And not everyone is in a name. We have too many that are not citizens. It's like, it's as if we were all helping someone move, we're all moving a couch. There's too many people in that one corner, they're just sort of pretending they're living, they're not really living. And we want everyone contributing, that's what we're doing here. We want people to achieve, and that's why it's Speed Good World. We can do the same old thing, and we can lock people up. I got no problem locking people up, that's what they need, related. But we need to be effective at loving to do it. And when we've got seventy to eighty percent of the people committing crimes, doing it just because they're addicted, and some rocket scientists understand them, they just need to remove that addiction, and figure out what the best way is to treat that. We can't just keep doing the same thing again and again, and expect things to get better. And we need to take risks, we need to do something different. I'm going to end with this, and Carrie Gray is in the building, I'm stealing this from her. I like the Speed Good World story, but I like this one, not quite as good, but it is flowing. There's a community that's having a celebration. The whole community is present. And they have a river that runs through this community, not unlike Connecticut here in Chambersburg, that's Summer River. So there's a big celebration, the whole community is present. And they're having to do this music, "Good Times." And someone sees a baby floating in the river. And they're distressed, and they move to the river banks, and then pull the baby out. And almost as soon as that baby's pulled out, two or three others come floating downstream as well. So more people witness this, they go to the river. As more people go to the river, then more babies are in this river coming down the stream. It's aggressive. Everyone there is a sister, except two people. Two people were running upstream. And everyone looks at them, sort of responding, saying, "Hey, we need everybody to help here, let me see what's happening." And those two say, "Well, you do this, we're going to go upstream and find out who's throwing these babies in the river and stop it." They're getting to the root cause. There's a manifestation with the addiction, that may come in terms of crime. And crime will be dealt with. What we're not doing, we're not getting at the root cause. We need to stop letting them throw the baby in the river. Thank you.
Our next speaker, victim Lynn Hostetler, and her daughter.
Good evening. I want to apologize upfront that I've become a little emotional as I speak to you, because it's difficult to talk about the loss of a loved one. In the summer of 2002, if someone had come up to me and said, "Lynn, your niece Dana is a drug abuser, drug addict." I would have said, "You're nuts." She comes from a loving family, two parents, grandparents. She has a sister that she adores at a ten, Shippensburg University. She's an athlete, she plays softball and basketball, and she has the most beautiful voice. In fact, at that time, we wanted her to triumph for the American Idol Show. So she couldn't be a drug abuser. And then if that person asked me and said, "Would you believe it if I told you Dana's only going to be with you six more months? She's going to die of a drug-induced suicide." And I said, "No, no, no, not my Dana. She's eighteen years old, she's just got accepted to Shippensburg University." She's going to be there for... And then, the final statement that this person says to me, "And do you know the only person that knows Dana's dark secret?" And I said, "No." She didn't have any secrets. And the person would say, "Your daughter, Molly." Her beloved cousin and best friend. And I said, "No." Molly is a senior at Chambersburg High School. Yes, Dana and Molly have been best friends since birth, Dana being a year older than Molly. As families, we did everything together, even though Dana lived in a small community outside Johnstown, Pennsylvania, called Salix PA. But we could do everything. Anytime we could have a chance, the two families would go to the beach, or Dana would come to Chambersburg, or Molly would go up to Salix. So, yes, they're best friends, but Molly would have said something if Dana had a secret or better. I'd like to share with you tonight, the red flags that were there, but we never noticed them. Dana did come to Shippensburg University, and we were so thrilled. Here she was, just twenty minutes down the road from us. We felt like every weekend, Dana would come and visit with us. But that didn't happen. See, Dana kept going home on weekends. And one weekend, when we were going out to visit family, we offered to pick Dana up, she got in the car. She slept the entire ride up to Salix. And then, it started happening. She was vomiting, she was not sleeping, and she was complaining that she might need to drop out of school, because she had what we thought was the problem. She had an anemia, it's a female problem, and we thought, "Well, maybe this is causing her to be so sick." And lo and behold, in November, she did drop out of Shippensburg and went home. That Thanksgiving, we didn't realize it was going to be the last time that we saw Dana. We went up, and her mom is the best cook, and we had this wonderful Thanksgiving dinner. At Christmas, we went to see my family, so we had decided to wait and go to Salix the weekend after New Year's. Unfortunately, though, on January 2nd, 2003, I'm sitting in my office at the Tuscaloosa, in this Tuscaloosa School District, where I was a school counselor, and I got a phone call. It was from my husband, and I thought, "Oh, this is true, she doesn't usually call me on work." He said, "Lynn, are you sitting down?" And I said, "Yeah, something wrong with my kids." See, besides Molly, I had an older daughter, Katie, and a son, Brian. He said, "No, they're fine, but I think you still better be seated, because Dana took her life today. She shot herself." I said, "What?" He said, "Yeah, she committed suicide." I said, "Well, how could a disease like anemia cause such a beautiful young girl to want to kill herself?" Then my husband said, "Lynn, I'm going to Shippensburg University to tell Jamie, Dana's older sister. I need you to go to the Chambersburg High School to tell Molly." I said, "How am I going to tell Molly that her best friend, her dear cousin, had just died?" Well, I called my friend who was a counselor at the Chambersburg High School, and I said, "You've got to help me with this. This is going to be really, really tough." So we called Molly down. And between myself and Janet Martin, we told Molly the pain I had taken in her life that day. And at that point, Molly just started screaming and yelling, "How could this be? How could this happen to us?" I said, "Yes, happened, Molly, and now we have to get rid of her funeral." So we went home, we packed, and we headed to Salix. When we got there, remember, we had not been there for Christmas. So my mother-in-law, Dana's grandmother, Molly's grandmother, had our Christmas gifts, and she always gave us money in cards. And she had it in mine, and my husband's, and she said, "Open it." And I opened it, and there was no money in it. She said, "That's strange." Then she said, "Well, maybe we got open your children's cards." So I opened Brian's card, and there was no money. And then, I opened Katie's card, and there was no money. And then the last card I opened was Molly's card, and there was no money. And she said, "That can't be. Dana helped me put the money in the cards, I just sent it the other day." So things were starting to not add up. We went to the funeral, and it was the worst sin I've ever gone to, to go to a child's funeral. It's difficult. Young women and men were crying, sobbing, "How could this happen to this girl who had everything going forward?" After the funeral, we had a phone, Molly drove with Jamie back as far as the exit of the turnpike for Shippensburg University. And I drove with my husband. When we got to the exit, Molly climbed into the car with us. And I turned to her and I said, "Molly, what is going on?" And at this time, I'd like to introduce my daughter, Molly Hostetler, and she will tell you the rest of the story.
Dana's addiction story was pretty short, and I was a part of most of it. It lasted about a year and a half. I was in tenth grade, Dana was in eleventh, and she fell in love with a boy. Like my mom said, we were best friends, so we shared everything. She was very excited about him, and I went up to see her fall of my sophomore year. She said, "Molly, he has introduced me to something amazing. I really want you to try it with me." Now, at that point, you know, Dana and I were really involved in things. We were athletes, we were in choir, so I wasn't sure what to expect from, "Let's try something." We hadn't had alcohol, we hadn't had cigarettes, you know, what is she getting me into? She said, "I have some heroin under my bed, I want you to deal with me. It's the most amazing feeling in the whole world." And I was really taken aback. The only visual that I had of heroin at that point was a junkie on a street corner shooting under the needle. She said, "You know, before you lose it, all this is, is a little packet of powder. You snort it up your nose, and you're going to have the most amazing high you'll ever experience in your life." So I thought about it for a little bit, and decided not to do it with Dana that day. I'm still very thankful that that decision was a good one. I'm a mother now of one, and I have one on the way, and it just, you know, thinking back, had I made that choice, how different my life would be, or, you know, would I even be standing here today? So I said no then, and that was a good choice, but the rest of the choices that I made, going along with Dana's addiction, were not that great. I loved Salix that day, kind of wondering what to do with this new information that I had. I held it in, I didn't say anything to anyone, and kind of hoped that it would go away. I went back to visit her a couple of months later, and her addiction had gotten worse. She said she went from using just on the weekends to now using during the school day and at work. She went to the little ice cream stand. I was amazed that she was able to function, but she said that she actually felt like she functioned better on the drugs. And then what you knew that she was using, she could just use whenever she wanted. I was starting to get really worried about her. And I, again, didn't know what to do. I had lots of feelings. I had feelings of fear, I was angry at her, that she was doing this to herself. But it never really, it crossed my mind, but it didn't seriously cross my mind to tell someone about it, because I was afraid. I was afraid of what my family would do. I was afraid that Dana would get into serious trouble, that she would be taken away, her life would be over. I was afraid that our friendship would be forever gone. So I didn't say anything. I also had this stigma in my head of what a heroin addict was, and I thought that Dana was the only person out there that had the face that she did of a heroin addict. I didn't know that there were other heroin addicts that, you know, were so beautiful and so involved. So I let it go. Dana continued her addiction, and continued to get worse. That winter, her story changed me, you know, from wanting me to be a part of this heroin addiction with her, to grabbing me and holding me and saying, "Please never try this stuff in your life." She went through withdrawal a couple of times, which she said was like a flu times a thousand. And she told me that she quit. And I knew that she didn't, but I let myself live with that denial, because I didn't want to know about it anymore. I didn't want to have that burden. Less than a year from that point was when I got the news that Dana had committed suicide. It was by far the thing that has shaped my life in so many ways. It was 2003, and it was supposed to be an amazing year, that was when I was supposed to graduate from high school. And I did, but it was definitely overshadowed by my best friend's death. There will always be an emptiness in our family, there's going to be somebody missing. You know, she was missing as a person, my wife, somebody too, to be there with my kids, she loved children. But I wish that I had heard something... But I wish that I had heard something like, "What's going on tonight?" Identifying the spaces of heroin addiction is so important, because I think there are others like myself who don't realize that it can really touch anybody's life very quickly and ruin it very quickly. I think it's also good to take that stigma away, and, you know, maybe had I known that there were possibilities of positive treatment options for her, and that, you know, maybe she wouldn't have just been carted away right away, that I would have stepped forward at that point. I miss her very much, and it sounds like 2003 was the last time that heroin has been as big as it is now. So I hope to be a voice to anyone who has that family member, a friend, son or daughter who is experiencing addiction and needs help, and to go out there and get it for them.
In conclusion, I will have to tell you, one month after Dana's death, Molly came back. And she came to the home, and she said, "Mom, you won't believe it. An 11th grader at Chambersburg High School, just from an overdose from heroin. Her name was Jennifer Robinson." At that point, I knew this heroin epidemic was not in Philadelphia. It was not in Baltimore. It was not in New York City. It was not in Salix, Pennsylvania. It was here in Chambersburg. We have a problem. This year, on June 21st, Dana would have turned 30 years old. In her memory, Molly and I are doing this to say, "Please, to all of you, don't get started with this drug." We feel like with Dana, it probably only took one time, and she became addicted. It's a horrible, horrible drug. Please, let's put an end to it. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Joel. I mean, what's her name?
Joel.
Joel. No, Joel. So Joel is an expert, and will discuss his personal experience and how he could be with us.
Thank you. It's really great to be with you, and yes, the lights are, I've got a gentleman describe. I can see the front row, basically. Thank you, ladies, for sharing that. No matter how long I've been working addictions and actually coming out of addictions, I thank God that I have never lost my sentiment, passion, or compassion for every story. It's what motivates me. It's what motivates my wife. We have decided, I believe probably several years ago, maybe before we even knew it, that God had led us to commit our lives to this fighting against addiction. I'm a graduate of the Team Challenge program in 2003. I entered that program with 20 years of addiction. I entered the program in '36. Half my life had passed, and I had tried several other options. I had tried all the standard cultural simple solutions for my complex problem: outpatient, counseling, groups. And I have the highest respect for all of those organizations, and we need them. But like most of us discover, and as many have mentioned, the level of care and the duration required to reverse addiction is complex. Because you see, the brain is complex, and that's where addiction brings its affliction. Where there's a process of learning in the process of recovery, there is also this arduous process of unlearning. Two plus two equals four, and I have to unlearn that and have to rewrite. Two plus two equals five has to be unlearned. I showed up at Team Challenge with a host of fives. After 20 years of addiction, I had found myself suicidal, carrying a rubber hose in the trunk of my car, waiting for the right alley to go down, that day believing I will connect this to my exhaust and relief will be found. I don't know exactly why that was thwarted from my intentions. I just, my level of hopelessness just never completely tapped out, but hopelessness is the feeling of addiction, and lies overwhelming. Ironically, what we find through the process of understanding that it can be reversed is that we can also thwart the hopelessness. But you know how that happens? When families like these come forward, and we come together as communities, and we start to speak out against it, and we start to be educated, we start to affect policy for our lawmakers and for our local politicians and legal officials. And I'm so proud to stand among the officials that have come here today to speak, who also share this passion to be relentless against the insidiousness of addiction. By the time I got to Team Challenge, crimes per day, per week. At one point, I was living in a crack house, selling crack cocaine in Phoenixville, Pennsylvania, supporting my habit, incurring offenses throughout the day, four to 10 times a day. My personal life incurred a minimum of $500,000 to $750,000 worth of damage to the communities that I affected. I was 30 pounds lighter than I am now. When I came to Team Challenge, I was 129 pounds. I was $17,000 to $25,000 in debt, and soured every relationship in my life. I could not believe that I was actually in a place to what I couldn't get out. I swore that eventually, no matter how bad it got, there would be some inner fortitude that would pull me out. No such thing exists. Addiction is not biased, and it's been said over and over again throughout this town home, like a malaria mosquito, if you extend your arm to it, it will have you as its host. And so what we have to be doing is figuring out what are the prevention methods, what are the ways to educate families and individuals? It was my family's understanding finally, they finally got the three Cs of addiction. I think they learned it just through their hardship and experience with me, but as it turns out, it's a clinical understanding. The three Cs of addiction are this: You cannot cause another's addiction. You cannot control someone's addiction, and you cannot cure someone's addiction. It was my father's tough love, this was the 80s, that I began my addiction, but it wasn't until the 2000s, with the amount of fatigue that I had incurred to my family, because addiction is by no means an individual affliction. Addiction is a family affliction. Families must be healed. Family systems have to be healed, or even when that love goes away and gets that help, if they return home to an unhealthy, uneducated, unhealed, disempowered family dynamic, the chances of success are next to none for that addiction in the family and that individual. It was my father who said, tears rolling down his face, "Joel, you cannot live here." Couldn't believe it. I think I realized at the moment past my anger and resentment of the addiction, fighting to survive, that my father must really have indicated in me a real issue that his power couldn't resolve, and he understood that what I'm probably going to have to do is be motivated by pain. Imagine that. I'm going to submit to you that the freedom of addiction is found and motivated by the pain of addiction. What I want to do is explain a couple things about addiction that I think will provide you as a sense of empowerment. I don't know if you, and I think you, I believe, I'd like to do that you got the message tonight. It's not the inundation of a thousand stats. It's not the inundation of a thousand newspaper articles about the epidemic. The overarching theme here is not why, or look at what is happening, but the theme here is what are we going to do about it? This is the approach we take to all the dramas, the crises in our society, in our personal lives. Getting stuck on the why, 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 there will be no movement of change. We have to step into what are we going to do about it, and how can we use this to the betterment of our community and commit our lives? And so I want to give you some things to understand, and what the relief came for me, and it certainly speaks about levels of care. We have to understand that the change of addiction is never found in removal. Sobriety is never enough. Addiction has to be a process, and recovery has to be a process of removing the addiction, but then filling the gaping hole that demands investment. Because that is in the heart of every person, to invest their life in at least one thing they prioritize. We don't know how not to do it. And so where I removed the investment, the worship, if you will, of the addiction, my heart craves something in replacement. Unless something goes in there that speaks to healthy resolve, healthy coping mechanism, healthy relationships, healthy self-image, self-esteem, by default, I would probably reduce back again in my bouts of emptiness, back to that one thing that had filled me and sustained me, because you see, addiction is not an event, and it's even something beyond the process. Did you hear that I have 20 years of addiction? Do you also understand that I was not alone, certainly isolated within the confines and the bondage of my own personal addiction, but yet a member of a subculture? Addiction is a culture. Like larger society, it provides acceptance, self-acceptance, intimacy, status. It's all in the culture of addiction, although the cost is taking our lives. What we cannot get from larger society, we find comfort in, even at the cost of our lives, in the culture of our addiction. When you're asking someone to come out of their process of addiction, you are asking them to come out of everything that keeps them safe in their culture with the inability, not unwillingness, the inability to recognize their true need for change past the oppressive nature of addiction, the biological changes of addiction, and the cultural needs of addiction. I want to share with you very briefly, and I want to respect my time. I know that I only have about 20 minutes, and I appreciate your time, and I want to respect it. Here's the thing I have to understand, and this is certainly what I hear happening from the DA, who I know personally, and I know that's hard for addictions, and I stand with him on the front lines, as do the other officials here. I do. Addiction is not thwarted by prison time. Addiction really doesn't care how much time you give it. Addiction will asleep at the gate of it. Addiction will lie late in a person until it's resolved and intervened, until that person has a beard down and a beard raised alive. Addiction is not thwarted by punishment. Addiction requires great levels of external motivation continuously that promotes the necessity for internal change. So here are some things that I would like to share with you that are considered the myths of addiction. These can also be found on the Team Challenge website. And then I want to share with you a little bit about my wife and I's motivation, and specifically the organization that my wife has founded. Because I believe that what we need is education as individuals. I think we need also policy change, certainly, community change. That's what I see happening here tonight, but it begins with us individually. If someone we love incurred some rare ailment from Ratswana, you would be the local advocate on everything to do with that ailment. You'd be able to tell me the local treatments, the recent developments, the manifestations. You would know it all. Why is it that we have this armchair understanding of addiction? Why do we not see it as an affliction, an ailment, that requires a higher line of education to be empowered to rise above it and respond to it appropriately? Where have we decided that we understand it without the education? We need education, folks. I didn't say experience. Experience can be a liar. Experience will keep you emotionally bound. We need education, blended with a skillful experience, perhaps. One of the myths of addiction: Overcoming addiction is simply a matter of willpower. You can stop using drugs if you really want to. Prolonged exposure of drugs alters your brain. There's no two ways about it. It alters your brain. That will result in powerful cravings and a compulsion to use. These brain changes will make it next to impossible to ever quit by sheer force. Shading out will from someone we love and saying, "We didn't raise you this way. Your stronger than this is wind coming out of your mouth into our together." That person is not unwilling to get help. They are, in addition. They are unable. The changes that alter the brain, one of the primary places that affects the brain, not getting a null neurology, is it affects the executive function in the frontal lobe, the decision-making process. When this has been impaired, to expect that someone then will deliver a conscientious healthy resolve is, to some degree, asking for more than a person is capable of giving. In the brain, you know a social dilemma, and I know you maybe have heard it from like sociology classes and such, and it's the starving man who steals in order to feed himself for the urge of self-sustenance. In other words, there's an active part of his brain that understands to some degree, although the man has never been unethical in his life and is revered in his town, he's now caused to step away from his own value system in order to survive. I will submit to you that in the brain of this man, for 20 years, there was no deliberating on whether I thought my coping skill of addiction and drugs and alcohol is an option. In the limbic system of the brain, fight, flight, and freeze, in the addicted mind affected in the limbic system, the words that come to the brain when the urges come and the conflict faces the addict is not, "Hmm, that would be interesting resolve." The words are, "Survive." Survive. When there is a mechanism in voice inside of the brain of an addict with biological change and oppressiveness, ethics, values will have to be second to survival. The brain screams, "Survive." I don't know why he does these things, or she does these things. We never raised her this way. When the brain is screaming, "Survive," the starving man will steal. I'm not making any justification for the fact that a person does not have to own those decisions, especially decisions who I've ever picked up to begin with. The process of recovery is absolutely a challenge to that person's level of ownership and having to own the primary decision to use. But we, as family, have to also understand that once the addiction is taken into that stage four of lifestyle breakdown, dependency, and addiction, addiction meaning behavioral manifestation and lifestyle, there is no longer a window for reason. The window now is always closing. As the wind pours from the mouth of the addict incapable of making change, you're always closing. You need treatment, and nothing else is an option. And that's finally what my father did, and that's what he started up my family with, to also understand that we're leaving this decision up to a human being that is incapable of making the right decision for their life. Another myth of addiction: Addiction is a disease, so there's nothing you can do about it. Most experts agree that addiction is a brain disease, but that doesn't mean you're a helpless victim. The brain changes associated with addiction can be treated and reversed through therapy, medication, exercise, other forms of treatment. This takes me very quickly, as a quick segue, is that addicts have to hit rock bottom before they can get better. That's not true. Does a person have to get to a place of willingness for change? Yes. Hitting rock bottom is a suggestion that we, as family and loved ones, are powerless and must somehow stand on the sidelines and watch the degradation of our loved ones as they crumble to the divisiveness of addiction. Inaccurate, antiquated, outdated thinking. We, as family, have the greatest form of levers to bring about the difficulty of that decision-making and any other force known to be an addict by a process called raising the body. No longer standing idly by, realizing that in my attempt to bring resolve to this individual, what I'm actually doing with lack of education, acting purely emotionally in response to the addiction, I'm propagating the addiction. Not only is it not bringing... Not only is it not bringing resolve, it's actually causing the person to go deeper into the addiction as I begin to enable the process. The demand of addiction is greater than any one person in addiction's ability to meet it. It absolutely requires you. It required my father's rides and money, it required my sister's shelter, it required my mother's meals, it required everything that I had spent every other resource on to be funded then by my family, so that I can stay the same in my addiction, never having to experience the consequence of the addiction. The process of interviewing your loved one will absolutely be counterintuitive to everything that you know and your love for that. You will not be able to rely on your feelings to manifest the change required in your loved ones. You will have to rely on duty in the form, love in the form of duty, not in the form of feelings. And you know what that's going to require? An education. And it may require a guide to walk you through that process by way of intervention. Education is one of the things that we need. There's another myth that says you can't force someone into treatment. Treatment doesn't have to be voluntary to be successful. What's the alternative? To wait for the person in their midst to reach their willingness by the natural consequences of their own degradation? Or up the consequences by no longer enabling them, not telling them how to jail, not paying their phone bill, not giving them drugs, exacerbating the pain and discomfort in a way that the family then offers a gift for that person to enter into the process of treatment by the way of that motivation? Better than I have a person in the care and froze of those who were designed to bring about resolve and to hopefully carry that individual from a state of ambivalence to a state of action? To get that person while in the culture of change through our treatment centers to have even the remote possibility to be internally motivated, as opposed to watching him do it on his own in the devastation of his own addictive choices? If I find a person in quicksand, whether they think it's a swimming pool or not, I'm going to pull that person out by their eyelids whether they are emotionally attached to that or not, because there's a force inside of me that is inside of you, that we do not support death styles, we support lifestyles. If you didn't feel that way, we wouldn't be talking. We as human beings support life, we don't need emotional attachments to people's awareness of their need for life. We impose life if we have to. It is the basis of our legal system, it's the basis of our hospitals, it's the basis of recovery centers. I'm asking you to take your own volition as individuals, let alone coming up with and joining forces with your community officials and agencies, by all means. But as individuals, let's start getting education and start actually learning how to appropriately respond to addiction, not based on some school of emotional thought or experience. There is an absolute education on how to appropriately and inappropriately respond to an addicted loved one, how to motivate an addicted loved one, and how to keep them in it. I would like to tell you that my wife and I, just so you have at least one resource before you leave, and literature's on the back table. My wife and I offer free family educational programs. If it's at a great distance, we ask for a gas reimbursement. We will offer free educational programs, you can come to my wife's office in New Conroe, Pennsylvania, where you can get a list of where we do our educational programs. And I assure you that by the time you leave, you will leave empowered and added to. Not only maybe for your own addicted loved ones, but even for the many that come into your path. Let's begin at least with an education as families. The number one preventative factor for our youth to not enter into addiction is education. So we also have youth programs, we'll be going to programs through Team Challenge, through State Sharp Programs, also free of charge, that work on a gas reimbursement. I am so pleased to be a part of this group that had the courage to come out and to give everyone here the time and attention that you gave. But my real hope to know that victory and resolve came as a result of this is that you will second that. Not just an awareness. We can't get enough awareness through our newspapers or personal experience. When will we be motivated to actually take a stand? One at a time, one at a time. My wife and I will be available to you to answer any questions you have, we have resources for you. I know the other county members would be more than willing to offer any assistance they have. And I so thank you for your time and your devotion against this epidemic that's taking out our families, it's counting on state and nation. Thanks so much.